Good evening, everyone. I think we have all the commissioners here and everybody that we were expecting to be here. So I would like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of September. The first item of business is to accept or modify the agenda. We have a motion.
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
That's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, starting with Cedric at the left.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. So that will take us to our next, the first item, Roman numeral three, public comment. And I see that we have a fair number of people, at least in the room. I assume there are people wishing to make comments tonight. And I guess I now have a list of cards. So I would like to remind folks that our rules are to allow people three minutes to speak. And generally, the board does not engage in a back and forth on this. We're here to collect information from the public, hear the views that are put out. And please be assured that we will take them into careful consideration. The first card here is Matthew Finzel, 507 West Church Street in Champaign. And he's representing himself on the topic of Weaver Park. Do you wish to speak to the board or just these written comments?
I'm just here to leave my comment. Thank you.
And next up is Fred Del Coleman, 3201 South High Cross Road, here to, I assume, to speak.
Board of Commissioners, I'm here to speak in favor of the option two of the master plan for Weaver Park. There's been some discussion about this online, and some of the discussion seems to suggest that the Park District is failing the public by not paying attention to natural areas. And I think people who take that point of view are maybe forgetting the history of Meadowbrook Park, which was actually opposed by some members of the public when it was first proposed, and the Perkins Road Park, which is under development. These are both enormous projects and speak to the Park District's interest in preserving natural area and promoting natural areas. I'm in favor of this particular proposal because there is another set of constituents in Urbana besides those who love natural areas. I certainly love natural areas. I have a prairie of my own. I've always supported natural areas. But the Park District doesn't answer just to those people who love natural areas. There are other people who live in Urbana, families with children, young people who need recreational facilities. The development and building of the Health and Wellness Center is an example of the fact that the Park District recognizes those needs as well. This proposal has been part of the master plan since the 1990s. It's not something new. It's not as if the Park District is saying, well, let's tear up Meadowbrook Park and put in a parking lot. This is something that will benefit all the citizens of Urbana, not just those who like
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Next card is, if I'm reading this correctly, Judy Van Cleff.
Okay, please. Just give me the comment.
Okay. So you do not wish to come forward?
All right.
You do not wish to come forward? Next is Randolph Trufa, 308 Barr Avenue in Urbana.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to speak in favor of the skate park portion of the project at Weaver. I've grown up here in the Champaign-Urbana area, skated all my life, and it's been something that people have been wanting for a very long time. I actually met in this building about five years ago to talk about the prospects of it. We have a skate shop here. There's kids that come in that have never been to a skate park because the one in Champaign is so far, they don't have access to transportation over there. So, yeah, I just want to speak on behalf of the skateboarding community in favor of the project. Thank you.
Next is Chelsea Peterson, 404 West High Street.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea, as he said. I'm a PhD student in environmental science at the University of Illinois, and I've been living in Urbana for four years and enjoying its parks, also a long-term resident of Illinois. I'm here tonight to ask the Urbana Park District to consider redesigning its master plan for Weaver Park to conserve a greater proportion of the natural space than the currently proposed forty-nine to fifteen, fifty-three percent because of its value for wildlife, recreation, mental health, and education. I would especially like to see a plan that conserves a greater proportion of the prairie because this is the area that will be most impacted. Recall that we live in the prairie state. Nonetheless, I support adding sports fields to some sections of the park by prioritizing areas that are already mowed and reducing the number of proposed fields while identifying locations outside of Weaver to further support athletics. To emphasize why Weaver is important for conservation, I put together some statistics using the iNaturalist app, which is an application similar to eBird for identifying species. And I found that between the years 2012 and 2023, a total of 473 observations have been made by community members, 53 unique community members to be exact, and the number of observations has consistently increased over that 10-year period. And you can break that down into different statistics. There are 109 unique animals, 72 plant in one fungal species. I'm sure that's an underestimate. And within animals, they've identified 52 bird, 48 insect, seven mammal, two amphibian, and two spider species. These are just rough estimates, but they illustrate how Weaver is actively supporting biodiversity conservation, plus the enjoyment of people who love to observe and learn about nature. That doesn't even take into account the people who just like to run and walk there for exercise, relaxation, and reflection. As I mentioned, I like all of the Urbana parks, so I've been asking myself, what makes Weaver so special? Why does it work at the effort of making a new plan? What I like about it is that it's a bit quieter and wilder than the other parks in Urbana. And it's much closer.
Chelsea, if you tap your button, that'll light, we'll go back on.
It's much closer to town compared to the other forest preserves, which might take upwards of 25 minutes to drive to, which makes them very inconvenient and inaccessible, especially for people without a car. You could say that I could just walk somewhere else. I do love Buzy in Meadowbrook. But once you've been somewhere over 30 times and watched it changed over the years, you develop a personal relationship with it. So while I recognize that some compromise is necessary, as you design your plans, just keep in mind that putting, you're not putting roads and sports fields on top of an empty space. You're putting them on top of a place that matters to people. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brian Dunn, 310 North James Street in Champaign.
Hi, my name is Brian. Much like Randy, I'm here to just speak in favor of a skate park in Urbana. I've been following the planning around the Weaver and Prairie Parks, and I was super excited to see that a skate park was the number-one-mentioned amenity in a survey that was part of that planning. Not surprised, though, because skateboarding is hugely popular. It's popular both as a sport activity, but also kind of just a cultural thing with music and fashion. So a community the size of Urbana could definitely benefit from a skate park, and I hope that it continues to be part of the plan going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Susan Apple. I hope that's a correct pronunciation. 307 North Garfield in Champaign.
Good evening. You, I hope, have already received this statement, but I wish to read it into the record, for the record, if you don't mind. I represent PACA, and that is the Preservation and Conservation Association of Champaign County. We wish to state our support for increasing efforts to dissuade the Park District from disrupting prairie, wetland, old grove remnant that currently make up Weaver Park. We appreciate the fact that while waiting for financing, the UPD's good stewardship over many years helped create this special place, which now offers a splendid opportunity for enhancement. We encourage the Park District to find alternate locations for soccer and other playing fields that it's considering for Weaver Park, and to find effective but sensitive ways to improve accessibility to the current facility. The open, quiet, natural space of Weaver Park is sheltered from the busyness of much of our environment, and it provides much-needed respite for many who find relief there from the dominant pace of our lives. Just as important, if not more so, is to preserve and conserve the habitat that this park provides for multitudes of species that are increasingly endangered by human encroachment. Its role in drainage is likewise of great importance. We trust the Park District will heed the many concerns coming from a wide variety of citizens to adjust its plans to serve the needs of nature as well as people. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
James Barkley, 609 West Nevada.
Hello. Thank you all for listening to me for two hour, two minutes and 45 seconds, as I waste this introduction time, for your time on a Tuesday night that you put in and more. I'd like to say thank you. Urbana native, born and raised. I'm going to brag a little bit, but only because this matters for the Weaver Park perspective. I grew up, I played soccer in the Park District programs from age four through, sorry about that, we fudged on that birthdate one year, but it was a long time ago. I've coached as a volunteer coach on all those same teams moving back to the area. I have nine varsity letters in four sports. I grew up an athlete and a coach. So, and then I recently, I think I'm the, yeah, I'm the only one to have an undefeated soccer season at Urbana High School as a player and a coach. So I care a lot. I put my life into it, yeah? I also care a great deal about natural areas, sincerely. And skateboarding, I really do. And I grew up skateboarding. I grew up going to Meadowbrook before it was Meadowbrook. We had tree houses that we built out there. We did all sorts of unregulated things out there, before it became the beautiful natural area it is now. So I know what's going on with all of this, and I also understand the sensitivity that this community is capable of in its planning processes. So I think this is going to work out fine. Take one of the two options. I would focus based on what's been presented to me as someone who also has a master's in leisure studies and a PhD in recreation, sport, and tourism. I'm a professor of sport and recreation management at Eastern Illinois. So by the books, and I have taught recreation planning and park planning, by the books, I would just focus on traffic flow and safety, based on the difference between the two plans, and go with the one that speaks most to the safety of pedestrians and the crossover of automobiles and pedestrians. There's no question that the community across the street needs to be served by a recreational facility. The first speaker tonight, Fred Del Coleman, couldn't have put it better in that regard, and the need, the human need for use of some of that space. Because the proximity of an underserved community and a neighborhood, which is across the street, across Washington Street, makes all the difference to their participation in those recreational activities, including, there's literature there that speaks to after school and after-school athletics and recreational participation, and there's a lot of literature that speaks to skateboarding in underserved communities as well. So both the soccer piece and the skateboarding piece, just watch the traffic. That's it.
Thank you.
Technology, gotta love it. Ben Cap, I believe this is 1202 McHenry in Urbana.
Good evening. My name is Ben Cap. I'm a longtime Urbana Park District visitor, volunteer, program participant, UPDAG member, and community advocate. Thank you for this opportunity to share my perspective on the Weaver Park plans. In a recent public discussion session, there was a lot of concern about the environmental impact of athletic fields being added to Weaver Park, and I wanted to be sure to express my appreciation of the future and health of our planet was part of the discussion and that taken into consideration with any plan we might move forward with. While it's a noble goal to preserve the environment and restore the natural health of our world, we could turn every inch of Urbana Park District's space into prairie land and forest, and it wouldn't be a drop in the bucket on a global scale. So I'd like to set aside this noble but relatively ineffective option and focus on the immediate and impactful efforts that could be made for the long-term health and the well-being of our local youth and community. My wife lies and I and our children are highly active people, and we've enjoyed the parks and programs for nearly 20 years, from neighborhood nights to the nature center, from Buzy Woods to Meadowbrook, and from the Prairie Playground to our baseball, soccer, and swim teams. I'm fortunate that Tuesday is my one night off from coaching, so I can be here to talk about Urbana's ongoing need for purposeful and safe athletic fields. But so many in our active and sporting community can't be here. They're coaching or reffing or shuttling kids around in efforts to develop well-balanced and healthy children. Many in our soccer-loving communities, Guatemalan, Mexican, Congolese, are working odd shifts, multiple jobs, or have difficulty navigating language barriers. Soccer for many of them is a key communal experience and a primary and often only social, physical activity. The Prairie and Weaver plans talk about the retention of the soccer fields, but I'd argue that there have never been soccer fields in Urbana. There are open grassy areas where lines have been painted. The fields have dips that form puddles when it rains, swells that are difficult to play over even in the nicest weather, and potholes that are just waiting to roll or sprain an ankle. Our goal sizes don't match the needs of our programs, programs that are regularly among the top participated in and among the lowest cost per participant for the Park District. Our nets are hanging off the bars, not attached to the base, and full of holes, too many holes. And I think these nets are a good representation of what I'm here to say. In the Park District soccer program, the dream of every player is to score a goal. And if we can't even tell if the ball was in or out because our nets let the ball roll through, then how does it make our players feel about their efforts and about the efforts to support them? We say, you belong here. However, my fear is that what we're communicating is, I'm sorry, there's no room for you in our community because we continue to prioritize token gestures to a global crisis over ineffective, over effective investments to serve your local and immediate needs. So on behalf of the active community, the busy families, our underrepresented friends and neighbors who share my concerns, and so many others who find it difficult to join in this discussion for so many reasons, and who I've had the pleasure to work with over my many years serving the Urbana Park District, I thank you for your time and consideration.
And last card that I have filled out here is Katie Rowland, 2451 County Road, bup, 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 at St. Joe.
You know I always do better with the script, so. All right. Don't worry. You all know how fast I talk, so I'll keep this short. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service. Board membership is often a thankless and certainly an underpaid job, and we appreciate you. If there's anything I've learned from working for local government, it is that organizational history is important. Just because new board members have come on doesn't invalidate the work of those that have come before. Please take a moment to reflect on the district's mission of providing both parks and recreational program opportunities. It is not the Park District's sole objective to provide natural areas. This lens leaves out a lot of people that will be served by recreational programming at Weaver Park. But first, a little history. Before Weaver was a park, it was a cornfield. After the wetland was installed, it was seeded with a prairie mix as a cover crop, I believe, by Derek Liebert, to await its future master plans. Master plans that had public input, board support, and community buy-in. In fact, we have given quite a few conference session presentations over the last 20 years about these partnerships that made this, that the master plan has fostered. Sorry. It is the Park District's plan, it has been the Park District's plan to put sports fields at Weaver Park since 2005. The soccer fields at Brookins do not belong to the Park District. The Park District leases them from the county. The fields are not level, and they are not high-quality soccer fields. But the Park District has no interest, well, no plan to invest in improving these fields since they do not own the property, and the county is actively seeking to move away from Brookins, so the future of this property is uncertain. The majority of the soccer programs at the Park District happen on these fields, and without them, the program would not have enough fields to accommodate these needs. And while soccer is not the only recreational activity that is included in the planned improvements at Weaver Park, it is important because this program has the highest participation levels of any program in the district. We have wonderful, high-quality natural areas at Meadowbrook, Perkins, and Buzy Woods. Please don't let this be a missed opportunity to provide much-needed recreational programming amenities in our community. Don't forget the history. Thank you.
Next, we have James Shearer, 509 North Fourth Street in Champaign.
Hello. Thank you all for letting me speak. I'm here just to speak on, in favor of a skate park being a part of the plans here. I'm a skateboarder, actually interrupted my skate session to come here, so I'm a little sweaty. Sorry about that. Yeah, I just think it's a good activity. You know, it catches a lot of kids who maybe aren't a part of organized sports, and, you know, it's got a good, like Brian spoke about, the culture of skateboarding has a lot of history and tradition, and even here in Urbana, I know that I've talked to a lot of, as we call them, old heads that have told me about skateboarding here in the 80s and 90s and stuff. And, yeah, it's, a lot of it's been, you know, kind of under the radar, but I think it would be cool to kind of make it official and give them a skate park and, you know, let the skateboarding community here continue to flourish and grow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Miller, 1106 Silver Street.
Hey, everybody. Hello, Corgi, Tim. Finally, nice to meet you guys. I've been talking to these guys for about four years about a skate park, I think, and we've been putting in different plans. We run a community group called CU Skateboarding. It's a little outreach program. We build obstacles and furnish used skateboards for kids. So it's, we think it would be beneficial to the community because it's such a low entry point once a skate park's built to furnish kids with skateboards. And an action sports park covers biking, skateboarding, rollerblading, scooter use, and like quads, typical roller skates. So multi-use area. We were looking at something about 10,000 square feet for our population is the standard size of skate park we were looking for, with lighting and amenities. So just coming from the Brookins field as a soccer dad now, I just saw about 100 kids out there playing soccer in the different leagues. And just kind of comparing skateboarding to soccer, there's, we have a team sport on one hand that garners the interest of team play. And so during COVID, what do we have? We had an individualistic sport that was necessary because kids couldn't get together and participate in group sports, right? So we've got a way for kids to access health, mental health, do a physical fitness activity, and what skateboarding brought to a lot of kids I see in the community is learning through failure repetitiously every day. There's no teams. There's no goal. It's completely individualistic, and it's self-motivated. So you have a community of people around you that are also participating, and they are all self-motivated and doing what they want, cheering each other along. It really builds a lot of morale. And the young people we have, skate parks in Champaign, the parks are just outdated. And just a skate park at the Prairie location would really serve, you know, the broader Champaign-Urbana community, but specifically the community around Weaver. I think it is important to give kids their, you know, teens to 20s, something positive to do. Skateboarding kind of attracts kids that maybe had rougher home lives, you know? So it's a, it's a, it's a good, it's a good way in for young folks to see a different potential and kind of exercise their individualism. So appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Kayla Myers, 903 East Farland in Urbana? Or is it Kayla?
Kayla.
Kayla, so, sorry.
Hello, and thank you all for giving us an opportunity to speak to you tonight. Weaver Park has been massively important to me personally for the past 10 years or so. I've been visiting there before there was even a parking lot, and to see the space change over the last decade has been extremely special because it just keeps getting better. I want to be sensitive to the fact that the Park District does need to offer a variety of amenities to serve different populations. However, I do want to urge you that in this time, it is a global crisis that we are facing of biodiversity, and while the problems are massive, it is each of our responsibilities as individuals and as organizations to do whatever we can in order to help address this because if we all sort of just threw our hands up in the air and said the problems are too big for any one of us, then we certainly won't get anywhere. I think it's extremely special that Weaver has become home to endangered and threatened species. And while I understand that development of some degree is likely inevitable, I do want to urge you to make sure that appropriate buffer zones are placed to be sensitive around the species that utilize this space, and that fields that are installed are managed in such a way as to not negatively impact the quality of the water and light pollution, sound pollution, all those things that could make this space more difficult for the species that already inhabit it. So, yeah, I understand that we are likely going to see development at Weaver Park, and I sincerely hope that we can find a way to make it work for everyone, the wildlife included, because they are, their needs are also important and should be considered as well. And I would also like to ask you for any amount of natural area that is removed out of Weaver Park, that an equal and even better, a greater amount of natural area could be provided in other spaces that currently aren't utilized fully throughout the Park District, even if that comes in the form of installing more pollinator pocket gardens throughout different parks. So I think there are ways to turn this into a positive situation for wildlife, and I want to be here to advocate for them and be their voice since they can't be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Neil Gibbons, 2007 Boudreaux.
Good evening. My name is Neil. The funny thing is, I just got done coaching a Park District soccer game out at Brookins. And Katie, one of the staff members said you do know about the meeting, and I really didn't know about the meeting. But I said, "Well, you know, I invested enough in my evening's soccer. I might as well talk about it one more time." Well, I guess I'm against, or not against or for, but you guys have been dragging your feet for so long with soccer. You knew Brookins was going to close, or you knew something was going to happen. But it's that just continued dragging your feet. Yeah, you've got beautiful buildings all over the place, you've got beautiful trucks, you've got people with big salaries, but you've dragged your feet so long on this, and that's how we got here and this thing. When you talk about Weaver, I work at King, and I try to do some outreach, trying to get kids to soccer. And I'm just worried about, it's just going to be another facility that's beautiful, but we won't be able to get the kids there. You know, how are you going to do that? And then I talk about the soccer program. And you can talk to me about Corky all day long, and I love Corky to death, but we go round and round a couple of different times about the numbers, the drop, the attitude towards soccer. One team, I mean, I just feel like we're not quite organized at the administration level and/or the soccer level. So if we're going to build these fields, but we're not going to organize the way to have good programs, then that's a concern for me. And I hope that is something because, you know, again, I've done a lot of outreach, trying to reach into the community to, you know, have soccer fields. And Corky has given me money to have these teams. He's, you know, he's done an outstanding job with helping me to do that. But it wasn't continued this year. And it wasn't the money that Corky didn't refine. It was the outreach portion of it. And so if we're not really doing the job when we have only one fifth and sixth grade team, then, you know, I kind of wonder, like, are we really going to be able to do this and hold on to the quality of soccer in Urbana? And are we interested in investing in that program? Or are we going to build this beautiful facility, and then it's going to fall off? Because no one really takes the energy and the effort to make sure that it is accounted for. And that's why, you know, tomorrow I'm going to meet with Nancy because Nancy wants to know all about it. And today I'm here, and today I coached, and all that kind of stuff. So I feel like I got a pretty good investment. You know, I swim, I play tennis, I play pickleball. And I can go on and on about the things I do and how I notice the Park District. But I feel like if we're going to make this commitment to soccer, we better make a commitment that is real, and it helps the community, and we're all in on it because I just feel like we're kind of a little bit fragile right now with what we do with the soccer program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board tonight?
Yeah, I was too busy talking to fill out a card, so here it is. No one would be surprised at that, I suppose. Microphones, and I don't always get along. We'll see how this works. I'm Bob Vaden, of course. Most of you know me, if not all. I've lived across from the present Weaver Park for just short of 40 years. I've also been a steward to the Park District for just short of 40 years. I, basically, we presented with two options, neither one of which is exactly my favorite. Option number one, to me, is not acceptable. It leaves fields, ball fields, right up under the old ancient oak grove. Option two puts baseball fields in the north and soccer fields in the south. Am I right there? And that one at least lowers the impact to the north, to the woods. There are some features, though, that I would like to see changed on the designs. The parking road into the center of Weaver is unacceptable. You're carrying traffic, fumes, noise, oil, gas leakage, whatever, right up into the remaining natural areas. Simply switching the baseball diamond and the road would make no change on the footprint, but put the road at, parking road at the west edge where it's more out of the way. I would like to see the practice fields moved in some way. Maybe some school property could be used. Maybe you can do with a borrowed practice field or two. But the main fields are fine, but the practice fields, I'd like to have those removed. If we build the soccer fields, as often do, you're cutting the buffer zone to the marsh rather close. The marsh is already has a, has very narrow, very little buffer. The, there's a subdivision to the east. There's, right now, lawn to the south. And to the west, there's quite a bit of buffer, but that's where the soccer fields will go. So if the soccer fields go in there, the area of where the practice fields are shown could be planted to several acres of high-quality prairie. It would give the marsh a buffer zone on the south, which would make up for losing it on the west. It wouldn't be as much land, but I think it'd be enough to make a difference. And that would continue to protect the marsh. The, the marsh, by the current plans, will be hemmed in by the west, south, and east. And only on the north will there be a buffer zone or natural area. The marsh itself is carefully, is a carefully reconstructed natural feature with high diversity. I think we need to look into something about drainage from parking lots and ball fields. Something must be addressed there, altered, controlled. Chemicals will alter the marsh and very likely destroy its diversity. I have seen this happen.
Bob, your three minutes are up.
And yet I have another three to go. Well, anyway, I'll just say that I think if we make some changes to Plan B, I think the site would become really a spectacular site and a site that would end up being a place where other, other folks come to visit to see how to do it, basically, both in-state and out-of-state.
Thank you. And there will be additional opportunities to make comments. Next, Andrew Valentine, 17 Cedric Drive in Urbana.
Hello. I'm here in favor of the skateboard park or skate park in general. A lot of people of all ages could use a facility like that. I come in contact with people almost every day because I run a small skateboard shop here downtown Urbana. So I like, I have like a six-year-old student that I see every Sunday now. But then like one of my good friends is also like 60, and everybody rides at the skate park. So, and also, like, Urbana doesn't have any official place for a person who identifies themselves as anybody who would use a place like that to use. So just to have one would be, it would be like monumental. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Now, seeing none, again, would like to thank everybody who took time out of their evening to come out here and, and make their views known to the board. We appreciate that. And as I said to Bob, it's not likely to be the last time that there'd be an opportunity for public comment. We now move on to Roman numeral four in our agenda, the Urbana Park District Committee Report.
Do we actually have anyone to report?
No.
I feel special.
Okay, then. There are no, no questions or other comments on the update report. Let's move on then to our consent agenda. On the consent agenda for the, this evening, well, first, I, we've got people who are maybe not normally. And just by the rules of our consent agenda, it's the privilege of any single board member to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for consideration later in the meeting. On tonight's consent agenda, our approval of the minutes of the August 1st study session, approval of the minutes of the August 15 regular board meeting, the monthly departmental reports, namely administration, planning and operations, and recreation, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action to renew the five-year lease agreement with the East Central Illinois Archers at Judge Weber Park in Urbana, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude.
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
I second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, and under the consent agenda rules, there is to be no further discussion at this point. So we'll hold a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Takes us to Roman numeral six, the reports for the evening, starting with financial reports.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see a full house again. Start with our revenue and expenditure reports. Sum one is our first report, first page, all funds less capital improvements. Total revenues for August, year-to-date, is $6,252,999. Total expenditures, $3,663,388. This gives us an excess of revenues over expenses paid of $2,589,611.
I do have a question.
Absolutely.
I do have a question, and maybe this is something you've asked before, but in year-to-date balance, you list, you put in parentheses, abnormal.
I didn't put that there.
Who put that there?
I can tell you, this, this report is generated out of our accounting software, the S&amp;A, and-
So is the accounting software's fault.
And, sure, I'll buy that.
All right.
I believe the reference to abnormal would just be difference or variance, or, you know, something like that.
The other question that I had, I noticed that the, the property taxes are substantially more than half of what's expected. Is that because we're getting more property taxes than expected?
We are definitely getting more property taxes this year over previous years. CPI is way up, for starters, and with the TIF expiration, you know, we've got a little-
That's right.
From TIF, too. So both of those things helped our cause. So yes, we will be getting a little bit more this year over previous years.
Money is good.
Pardon?
Money is good.
Yes.
Yeah.
It could always be better, but we'll take it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt.
Page two is our capital improvement fund, all by itself. Revenues for four months, $3,015,012. Expenditures, $655,103. And we're going to see that change big coming up. Again, this is revenues exceeding expenditures, resulting in a surplus of $2,360,025. Sum three is all funds district-wide, just noting at the bout, at the bottom, the ending fund balance for the district as a whole, $18,773,923. The remaining summary reports are individual fund reports for our three main working funds, general, recreation, and museum. And the last page of this group of reports is the UIAC indoor pool. Our second set of reports, treasurer reports. This report is the amount of cash the district has on one day of August 31st, 2023, listing all 25 funds down the left column, and where the cash is invested displayed across the top. Bottom right indicating investments on this date totaling $21,364,474.58. Page two, the top section, is listing the amounts that we have in interest-bearing, interest-bearing accounts. Of that $21 million, listed on page one, $14,087,485 is out in investments at varying rates. The bottom section of page two, this is the inter-fund loans. There was no activity, no new activity or activity during August. And page three is the last section of the treasurer's report, listing disbursements for the month of August. The vendor payments listed here match the accounts payable report in our consent agenda. In total, disbursements of funds, which include payroll and vendors, is $1,143,146.78. And I present to you the treasurer's report for audit.
I move to accept the treasurer's reports for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting.
And then finishing up my set of reports with the capital budgets, the areas highlighted with an asterisk are the areas of new activity during August. My apologies upfront, evidently when we made the copies, the green highlight at the top for each of the dates, I'm sorry, it's very dark. Won't make that mistake again, but I apologize. So the first page of our capital budgets, 2019A, we have received in full county ARPA monies of $500,000, also already spent, FYI. Then in expenditures, we have $1,820. This was expensed to Fairgram for some more design work, Crystal Lake Road system. And then we had $271,678 expensed to open road construction number five. And then under the health and wellness initiatives from bonds, $4,260 to Farnsworth for Weaver planning, number seven and eight. And then we have begun using the city ARPA funds. We've used $27,580 paid to Core for some construction work and $1,682 MET for testing. 2023, no new revenues under expenditures. We had $313 under tributes and donations towards plaques and $3,264 for various construction crew projects, items, supplies, concrete, lumber, paint, et cetera. 2022, we did also receive 50% of our OSLAD grant for Meadowbrook Park Prairie Play, so we received $275,000 in revenue. And we had expenditures of $2,963 paid to Fairgram. Again, this is the ITEP project at Crystal Lake at Broadway, construction number four. And the last item on this budget is the ILM Water Quality Treatment, number two, $231. Which one are we on? 21. 21, we had $761 spent under the tributes and donations expenditure line. This was for several replacement plaques. And then in the outdoor learning pavilion, using the museum fund transfer, $1,234 was utilized for the plaque there. Further down- A little further down, water quality treatment, $3,549. So that one is split over to two budgets to complete that picture. 2020, there was no new activity in August. And 2019, no new revenues and the expenditures, the Crystal Lake ITUP, $3,184 to open road, construction number five. Artscapes and fencing, $16,623, open road, construction number five. And a little further down, transfer from general fund utilized, $173 to Fair for design, number 36, and $24,284 to open road, construction number five. So open road, construction number five, that total bill was $315,779. So we spread that across two budgets, four GL lines. That's why I kept repeating myself. Again, no new activity in the 2020 budget, and then I think Andy and Derek have some capital project updates.
Yep, I'll pull up my usual pictures. Typically, starting with the Health and Wellness Center. Last meeting, I talked, you know, primarily it was a lot of utility work, site work. Yeah, our projector's kind of flashing a little bit. So since that last meeting, they've basically been buttoning up a lot of those areas. So this is the Art Bartel Road where they have seed and straw down there. That was with the sanitary line. That line also went through Prairie Park in between a couple soccer fields, so they have graded that back and seeded it. A lot of site utility stuff was wrapping up, as well as rough ends for site electrical, parking lot lights. It's the base for one of them. Last week, the rebar arrived to the site, and that was kind of what was awaiting their work on foundations. So it was towards the end of last week, rebar came to site, so that's when they start forming that up for our foundations of the building. And then this week, here's some pictures of that foundation work, including some concrete that was poured just yesterday.
Was that rebar late or?
I think they wanted it last, or the week before last week, and it wasn't, wasn't too late, but it held them up a little bit more than they were anticipating.
Gotcha.
The electrical transformer was also relocated. That was done by Ameren. And that was completed early last week or the week, late the week before. Kind of going into out of construction and into more of the FFNE. This is the last rendering we have of our upstairs fitness rooms, so we did combine the north and center room. I have one more cardio kind of equipment related on the north, more of that strength equipment related in the center. We are pretty much at like 99% wrapping up our proposal to order that equipment. I would anticipate at the next board meeting, we'll have a recommendation for you all. That is a Sourcewell bid contract that we plan on taking to you next month, and that would get all of our equipment in all three of these rooms. We've also been continuing to meet with Farnsworth with our furniture bid. And in two weeks, we will meet with them again and review basically a 99% bid package for all of our furniture in the facility, or most of the furniture. And then our plan is to have that out to bid in October, bids opened in November, and then a recommendation to you all in December on that as well. I'm also optimistic that next month, we could potentially have the gym equipment. That's been delayed multiple months. They're waiting on shop drawings from the pre-engineered structure to make sure that our attachments are accurately portrayed and that we're ordering the correct equipment. So I'm hoping next month or the month after, but my goal is to have a lot of these large FFNE items, at least here, before the end of the year. And hopefully before any prices increase any further next year. Moving to Crystal Lake Park, saw a lot of action in the last few weeks. This is the ITUP project. There are forms for the abutments and a very large crane here. This one was not for the bridge, but to drive down the pilings. And that is the bridge for our ITUP project currently. And I don't know how often we have bridge projects in the district, but we've literally had two new bridges delivered to a single park, like within a week and a half of each other. And the other one is the sanitary bridge. And so this is the crane for a lot of that prep work, you know, similarly for the pilings and getting the foundations and the abutment set. At that time, we did have a two, it ended up being a two and a half day road closure. That's really just that center portion of the park. You can see my crude red lines there. That pretty much gives everyone access to the entire park still, so it's not a major, you know, negative impact for vehicles. But starting this week, they actually closed it again for a longer period of time. It should be closed at minimum another week next week. I'm anticipating it probably to go three weeks at least for that road closure. And they had an absolutely giant crane there to set the new bridge, which came in two pieces. And you can see it back here. I thought I had a picture of it sitting on its abutments, but I unfortunately do not. But it looks very similar to our ITUP bridge, and they do have that put together and placed currently. And here's a couple other images. The sanitary district's been out there getting pictures fairly frequently. And one gentleman does a, some drone images as well that he he shares with us, which is really helpful, really cool to look at. And so this is the bridge. They put it together. You can see the sanitary pipes underneath here as well.
Those pipes are very discreet. I mean, you, if you really look for them, you can see them, but they're well, kind of camouflaged by some of the structural details that they put in place. And yeah, they confirm that that brings sewage as far away as North Madison Avenue through the park to the main, the main plant. So they're, they're obviously transporting some pretty, a lot of waste. It's very important and.
And that includes the treatment, the pretreatment stuff from the craft plant itself that's probably well heard about recently.
Great.
Kind of a funny aside, the, the bridge on Broadway Avenue, when it arrived, they didn't anticipate there would be stamped north and south on each end. And it arrived with the north and south and south and north, and so they, they actually spun it in place by working around the, all the power lines and telephone lines masterfully and got it set.
Wow.
They did a good job.
Did we draw footage of that?
It's video.
I think I maybe brought up to the board a few months ago, it's been a while, that we had our tennis court contractor, who did the work at Blair, was down in our area a few months back, and I had asked him to come and, and look at some of our other courts. This is Victory here, and we ended up taking the opportunity to get into contract for a proposal for crack repair and recolor of the tennis court at Victory, and while they were there, to also work out the basketball court. So these are just some before images. They've been on-site for the last week, but they are not yet done. This is the basketball court. We can see our, our paint has faded. We had some damage that they're going to repair with the asphalt. And that should be finished up. When I talked to him this afternoon, he believes the tennis court could open up tomorrow and potentially the basketball court as well. When they do, I'll bring the pictures, but it's going to be a nice refresh for that park. And it's been a good group to work with. They've helped us look at and evaluate a lot of our courts in the district. They're very knowledgeable and helpful. So next meeting, I'll have, you know, before and after pictures. And here's kind of more up to date what it looked like yesterday. This is before, like last week, when they were doing the crack repair, and then here's when they're starting to do color code on it. And it'll be the same color scheme as Blair, the blue, US Open, blue and green. And last thing, just to make the board aware, I think as part of the last UIAC agreement, there's a number of capital project items to be improved. One of the big ones is the replacement of the slide tower. So here's a couple images I'd found in our file. It was repainted about four or five years ago, four years ago, maybe, and we've continued to see some issues with rust and corrosion. Derek had worked to get some information on, on doing a full replacement of the tower, and we actually have that out to bid this month, bid opening at the end of the month. And we'll have a replacement completed next summer, but we will probably have a recommendation to you all in October for that contract.
They now make these with, with better materials. They do a hot dip galvanized structural steel. Our base bid will include the same for the handrails, but as an alternate bid, we're looking at a fiberglass reinforced plastic handrail that we'll present to you all and hopefully be able to get into that as well, because you can see a lot of the corrosion comes from where the handrails interface with the, the structural steel. But yeah, Andy's right. We've, we've actually painted this several times in, in not too distant history. Last time, we went through a lot of effort to try to get in, worked with a technical rep with a painting contractor to do some pretreatment. They were supposed to isolate the rust and compartmentalize it. It wasn't successful. We brought back an industrial painting group to look at it, and they said, you know, the idea we were posing was if you disassembled the whole thing and sandblasted it and reassembled it, would you get more life out of it? And he wasn't confident you could get back together if, if we did that. So that's why we pivoted towards replacement, and the costs weren't significantly more. You know, at least the, the base bid, as we had it, the base bid has one of the two slides getting replaced. We also have an alternate bid for the, the drop slide in, in the plunge pool that we'll, we'll see what, how the pricing comes in, review. The bid opening will be just before our pool management team meeting, and then we'll come to the board with a recommendation based upon a discussion with the school district.
Okay, that's all I had, unless there's any questions.
Big public works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I should say, even though the base bid only has the one slide and we have an alternate for the second slide, if we only go with the base bid, we can still add the second slide. It'll be structurally designed where the second slide can come in down the road. So just want to make sure, tracking that.
Unless there are any questions from the board, time to move on then to the executive director's report.
Yes, so, yeah. So as we've been tracking throughout the summer, that our turnstiles have been an issue as far as counting the number of pass holders that come in. Still an issue. We're going to be working with either access controls, who has done the, that's their system, or another system for the health and wellness, so we're going to be looking at the two at the same time here fairly soon before next summer. So we'll get that fixed in the future. Again, last year, 2022, we had around 7,962 swipes of passes. This year, we only have 1,940, which obviously is not true, right? So walk-in visits, we had 37,808 in 2022. And, or actually, that's not correct. One sec. In 2022, we had 32,808 walk-in visits. This year, we ended up with 37,090. So a really good year, revenue-wise, just from, it's not exact totals of all the numbers yet, but the revenue last year was 319,207. This year's revenue was 365,207. No, 365,049. I transform numbers when I was writing them down, but that's, that's some bolts to the pool. I do want to just publicly state that we heard lots and lots of comments about being able to keep the facility open. We were the only pool probably within 45 to 60 miles. Actually, I don't know of any, any pools that were open, even in the, anywhere in the region, once mid-August came. And I'm, I'm very proud of our staff. We only had, we had one day that we couldn't do public swim. Staff called off and we were short, so there, we couldn't open. But they did a phenomenal job of, and, and the youth that were employed did a fantastic job of staying engaged for the entire season, so. Outside of that, I think it was a fantastic year for aquatics and swim team, nadiators. Believe we missed first place by a half a second.
Is that right?
Yeah. In the conference swimming, a half a second. So, yeah, next year.
I think there was one day that we were the only pool open in, outdoor pool open in Champaign-Urbana, because campus was down with their outdoor pool and Champaign was already closed, so.
Yeah. So they did a marvelous job and outside of some bad air, air days, we, we had to close that day, two air quality days. Didn't have a lot of rain days, but we had a couple, but all in all, I'll say I was in charge of the weather this year.
Keep it up, because it's working.
Next year, I can't count on that, but.
All right, moving ahead, just two other late arriving. You belong here. Things to add. I have one and Corky has another. Last Thursday, we hosted the Community Coalition and United Way. We hosted the 2023 Walk is One. We championed two neighborhoods in Urbana. There was groups that worked in Champaign as well, but I worked in the Urbana group. We had about 30-plus people, about half of them were in the Silverwood neighborhood. And I joined the Country Squire neighborhood. That's just south of our health and wellness facility. And can definitely report there are also threatened endangered species there too, and they're called children. And I can tell you, we visited a lot of houses that are going to be needing new facilities, new recreational activities, and all the help that we can get. So I'm fighting for every square inch of, of that neighborhood that we can support through our new facility. And would like to hear more people, you know, talking about that, that species and, and what's ahead for that. Corky, I think, has another update as well.
Yeah, I just, we had a, a basketball event this past weekend. Jamil has, you know, some past relationships with, with people. And we had someone had did a miss, mistake in Champaign and, and double booked a facility. So they called Jamil, and we were able to help Kendall Bostick. She's a women's basketball player for U of I. Her, her family have always done in their hometown a basketball camp for girls, third through eighth grade. So we were able to bring them over last minute, from three to, or eight to three, I believe it was. And we had 60 girls from third through eighth grade. One of the cool things about this program, her, Kendall, Kendall's dad was a basketball coach too, and he, you know, he's brought her in and up and taught her, you know, values in life. So the whole time during lunch, she talks with the girls, talks to them about decision-making, setting goals. So a really cool program, and now we've got them for the next two years, so. It's a new piece that we were able to add, and we look forward to that right now. One other thing that I had, Kyle and Jamil actually are at a meet and greet on campus with 150 student athletes to talk about coaching, mentoring, interning, or employment. So another piece that we haven't not done a whole lot of, so hopefully we can bring some more individuals into our community for those types of activities.
Sounds like a good idea. Great. All right, continuing, just reminding everyone, we have the CU Pride Fest coming up September 30th. Usually huge turnouts, hoping for good weather, so love to see Urbana stand up and shine with that also. We've got the UpDak. We've got the Up Deck September meeting coming up. That's our kickoff. We used to do that in August. And what we kind of found is maybe people are still traveling or out of town and not all back, even though school might be starting different. People are still, you know, not, not available as much. We, Kelsey and I had talked about moving the kickoff to September and everyone's usually back in place. So we'll be hosting that at the Up Deck Pavilion. And our new chief of police, Chief Boone, will be joining us to meet everybody. So we look forward to that. Please join us and let us know if you'd like to come and we'll have.
The meeting starts at six.
Um, we, thank you, Laura. We're moving it up. Very important, moving it up because it's getting a little bit darker. Remember, we shifted Jazz Walk with El Nora, and so that just kind of puts us a little later. So we, everyone agreed at the last meeting, six o'clock would be reasonable. We'll have box lunches, dinners for folks and eat, have some social time and then jump into the meeting. So if you'd like to join us, Kelsey will reach out or Paula, and we can add additional lunches or food. Continuing on, let's see, just wanted to update, a couple of health and wellness updates. Today, we were fortunate, Peter Michael brought his sculpture family celebration from New York to Urbana. We had Derek and Keith and I and Robin Hall joined us, met him over at Silver's Machine Shop in Champaign, stopped there to look at the piece. That's who's going to do the restoration. And then got a little time to visit, have lunch, and then I had to hop out. But Derek and group took Peter over to the new health and wellness site and were able to see it. I hope he enjoyed that.
He did.
Could visualize, you know, that piece. So it's going to be really cool. So we'll get that ready, take it back to Silver's when we get closer, get it restored, and then install it at the new building. So we'll have a nice piece of art right there on the outside. We also met with Binky Donley. She's the artist that's doing the interior sculpture piece. So we met and got an update. I think you recall, since we shifted our space, took a wall of light out, kind of tightened some spaces up, and it's a little more vertical feeling. She really felt compelled to kind of take another look at her design. So she basically redesigned the entry piece and it's going to be really wonderful. We talked about the grid device that'll hold it up above, and I think we're ready to move ahead with that. So it's pretty exciting. Donors are happy with the progress we're making, so we should be in good shape. Look forward to that.
Tim?
Yeah, questions?
Did you say the date was for the Up Deck kickoff?
That is next Tuesday.
You want to have their calendar in my book stuff?
Nineteenth.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
On the.
Right. It's the 26th or the 19th?
Yeah, the fourth, it's the fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, that's it.
I said next Tuesday. It's the next Tuesday after, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
It is the 26th?
Yes.
Okay. And at 6:00.
But 6:00 PM. It's a good thing I asked.
I think it's probably in the president's report too. We doubled up, wanted to make sure we didn't, didn't forget that, but wanted to make sure we have that date. So we're excited about things with health and wellness. That project continues. Last, I just wanted to close the, at least the formal remarks, you know, I, after our workshop number four, I think staff gathered on the Prairie Weaver master plan. And I think some of the things we heard at that meeting were, you know, can we slow the process down? Is there a way to go back and talk to more people to get more input? Can we pause the survey? Obviously, you've heard a number of comments, both at the study session, those that were there, and also tonight. What we recommended doing is putting a discussion group together, a collaborative group that would champion various areas. We've made a list of people that were either involved in the, you know, process, spoke at the workshop, or have reached out, or we've reached out to them, but really want to get a representative or more of a few areas that have a key interest. And so we've got a well-rounded group shaped out. We envision probably a series of meetings, probably one at least to go over the background, the planning, the history, make sure everybody understands everything from the grant to where we are, you know, today in our planning. We also want to spend time reviewing our program. What's the program for the park? What do we need? We heard people tonight in favor of certain elements, but we want to review, make sure everyone's aware of what that program, discuss any opportunities, any adjustments, what we, you know, really, you know, would hold on to. And then lastly, we'd spend some time on the survey, want to revisit that. How can we put, go back to that survey, what adjustments before we put it back out there to get information? Something I think we've talked about back and forth, or how do we handle survey information from people that are in resident or out of district, in district or out? I think what we determine might be best, unless the board has strong feelings, please let us know sooner than later, but the idea would be, we're really looking at user groups. What do people need and want? And secondary is maybe where they live. We just thought that the geopolitical boundaries weren't maybe as important because we know parks like Crystal Lake Park and Meadow Brook and, you know, some of our other parks, people come from a long distance. So we care about them, but we also understand and recognize and respect our taxpayer. So we want to make sure, you know, there's a place at the table, you know, for everybody in that area. Obviously, having, you know, more information on what we need at the park would help with, you know, finding final planning. So our hope is to go from option one or two, devise a new plan, take it back out when we're ready, share it with the public, get comments on that, refine that, and that would be something that would come back to the board for final approval. Again, we're open to any suggestions the board would have, but those are typical processes we found to be effective. Create, you know, a stakeholder opportunity, get credible voices that can speak to those issues and that are willing to help. Some parameters we also set up is it needs to be a collaborative, you know, approach. It has to be a you belong here park, and it has to have something for all. So we can't really entertain exclusive uses in that process because that's never been where we've been at the park district for any of our parks, aside from, you know, I would say right now, our Perkins Road site isn't open. It's more of a habitat site. And, you know, that's probably something special. And we don't own that property. That's something that's owned by the sanitary district where the caretakers of that site. So that's kind of in its own, own class. But we thought that process would help the board kind of refocus. What are the important things? Who are we hearing from? What are the highest met needs? Speaking of needs, we're finding some inroads on that, you know, a couple of the items that are identified in the program that maybe didn't have a direct home yet. One, I was at a meeting this week, met with the MTD and city group and asked MTD if they're still committed to the bicycle training facility. As you know, with their new facility on East University Avenue, they built an outdoor area that's set up and has lines painted. It's a multi-use site. They use it for, you know, bus training, but they have already done bike training facility, or classes there. They definitely are committed to that, and they would like to see, you know, that facility, you know, be improved and certainly be used at, you know, at a more frequent use. Talked about other things that would help that, you know, getting trails or sidewalks down university avenues so people could get there would be a good first step. And then we also talked, I talked about having a formal location like that would work for, you know, groups, wide variety of groups, so that we can still work with groups like Champaign County Bikes to do pop-up trainings in parks or schools or other places. So that wouldn't be the only necessary place, but I think what we're recommending is if there's already a built facility, that's something we may not need to provide, you know, at the Prairie Weaver site in a formal, you know, paved, lined out, programmed space that we could partner with our partners and utilize that. And there's been some discussion about, you know, the idea of foraging, food foraging sites and where those could go. So staff's out talking, working in the community to find potential other partners that might consider that. Again, I think it's something that we aren't really confident that it has space in a place, you know, in the new planet, the Weaver Prairie site. You know, we're talking about larger areas that would need to be, you know, intensely maintained. Often there's, you know, numbers of practices or chemical uses or things like that if you're growing fruits and vegetables for consumption. You know, you have to produce it to be able to, you know, give it away. So it's probably a site that might be out of our limits, but we're, you know, interested in seeing if we can help make connections. So we'll continue that. And there's probably a few other things I, I know we're in the works of. So, you know, we're, I guess what I'm saying is we're trying to find things that don't have a solid home, other options, you know, we're not forgetting. We have sort of a parking lot of ideas so that we can track those. And maybe there are things that come back later at another site. So all the input's been good and helpful, and, you know, we definitely want to take advantage of that. But again, we have a very aggressive program. We're already seeing and hearing that, you know, there's probably a limit on, on site and space at both of those parks. So that's what we're recommending to go forward. And I think, you know, if we could keep those community meetings, you know, to three or four months, could we come back, say in February with a final plan for the board to approve? That would be a pretty aggressive schedule, but, you know, we need to stick with this. Larger group, you know, it's challenging getting folks freed up. And I can imagine a hybrid in-person or Zoom, you know, format to make it convenient for folks. Maybe we break them into groups and that sort of thing. So we haven't got the nitty on that, but that's what we're proposing. We're confident we could, you know, bring the community together in that way and come back with a really exciting plan. You know, from a staff perspective in general, I think everyone's moving in the same direction. You know, a site that has a lot of different things, you know, it's got some really special natural areas that we can use. So in a lot of ways, it's not dissimilar to Crystal Lake Park or Meadow Brook Park. You know, we face those same sort of approaches, a lot of pushback or concern maybe with certain aspects as we took aggressive do-overs and make-overs. You know, probably Weaver's a little bit different because it's more of a less developed site. And so with less history of intensive use and things like that. So we do, you know, want to take, you know, very careful approach to keeping what we have. We certainly wouldn't want to hurt or destroy anything. But we, you know, it's evident we have multiple needs. And that's, again, not uncommon for park districts or any local governments, you know, trying to provide all the opportunities for as many of their residents as they can. So if, unless there's any other suggestions, we would proceed with that and hope to get started right away. We met this week, put together some ideas for outlines, and we want to start drafting a framework, you know, for each of those meetings and have a really strong agenda. So that's, that's how we'll proceed.
I guess one question in my mind is can we do that intense schedule, planning for Weaver, and at the same time, we're in the midst of two rather significant projects that are going to take staff time as well?
Probably would serve us, you know, to take the time it needs, you know, to do that. We certainly want to create a schedule because I think people respect schedules.
I mean, it's not like we have the money to develop the park.
Correct. Right.
We need to.
I think there's two driving factors, Michael, that we kind of are sharing that we think are a little more on a timely base. We know the city of Urbana is moving forward with the ITEP grant project for the bicycle pedestrian trail down Baker's Lane. So we want to be communicative with them and, you know, make sure we're, and we're trying to learn from them also, you know, how much will their budget allow, any adjustments or, you know, incorporating the park? I think they're open to that and discussing. We also want to have discussions about the, you know, mid, mid-street crossing, you know, for the future KRT connection and make sure those are all aligned. But those are probably coming sooner. They've received the grant and, you know, I'm sure once they get their, you know, documents all together, they're ready to go because they'll have a schedule. The other timely project is the Kickoo Rail Trail Head Pavilion that we've already been awarded funding. What we're doing right now is the steering committee, we recognized early on, even with that large amount of money, that none of our three organizations have the cash flow capacity to run those projects. So made a appeal to DCO to see if they would front the money. So as you know, with working with groups like that, there's a whole nother process you go through, and that's an application and a process. So we're already in that process. And so the hope would be that the money would be awarded, fronted, and then we've got a sort of a general plan of which projects would go first. And I think Weaver's in the second group of projects. The idea was get the, some of the trail things going in Vermillion and then probably have time. Remember, the Champaign County Forest Preserve will be responsible for managing that. They have limited capacity also, just with staff time. So we've got to break these projects down and get them going. But I, back to the point of making sure there's a plan, we have a location, we know, so that we can be ready when we're ready to get with our A and E team to start planning that, you know, facility and know what's going to go in it and what the budget is. So independently, our team, UPD team, can be looking, what's our piece of the project? What's it going to cost? What other amenities? You know, start putting it together so that we're ready. And there's a time on that, you know, money too. So we have to be timely with, with getting that, all that work done. So those are probably two new things coming to Weaver Park in the near term. You know, probably in two years from now, I'd love to see construction underway and things, you know, getting moving. But we'll have to wait and see how, you know, that goes.
Would not the ITEP trail be sooner than that?
Twenty twenty-five. This is what they're forecasting.
So kind of get through the rest of this year, planning and get it together for next year and probably bidding, you know, they probably want to bid in an advantageous time and, you know, try to get low, low numbers. So it's, it's very exciting. So, you know, I think Michael's point though is, is very valid. You know, a lot of our park work takes a long time just to get set up. Grants can run a three-year cycle. So even on a very fast track, you know, we've said some KRT things, the, you know, ITEP trail, we're committed to our health and wellness. We've got our phase two outdoor amenities. But I think our general staff sees there's probably a need for soccer, some soccer fields, you know, as we begin to move out of, you know, the Brookins Athletic Fields over to, those would be probably some of the higher priorities. So we want to be able to, you know, and again, that could take anywhere from six to eight years. You know, if you do a couple of grant cycles, you know, you're down the road, but are we ready? Do we have plans? Obviously, anything in the world could happen in between there, and so you just readjust. But again, I think getting onto our own sites, making sure we have our control of our destiny as versus to, you know, sort of hanging on to sites that evaporate over time. And, you know, that just has not been a sustainable approach for us. And I think our, we heard a wide variety of comments on that, but having at least decent quality fields that we can offer. You know, we're not the big league or the World Cup, but could we have some decent dedicated fields? And that, again, that's what drove our original interest in buying a, a new park so that we would have a place that we could plan, invest, and get the benefits of that long-term investment. So the shorter-term lease, in fact, I think our field use lease is up in 2026. So we'll be needing to, you know, think about that at that time. And if we're not ready and there's opportunities still available, likely we would have to renew those, continue to work. So, you know, the reality is we probably have a place for the short term, but the question is, do we have a place for the longer midterm to long term? And that's what we're really trying to crank out and really get focused on. And I think this process will hopefully, you know, kind of bring all the voices together. I think it's already been pointed out, we'll never please everybody in Urbana. There's, you know, a number of interests that, you know, we may not be able to address. But if we can get as many of them as we can, then that's really good for the community. And that's our history. That's how we do our work. You know, we want to be inclusive and make sure everybody that wants to be included and it's reasonable that we can actually afford it and operate it, that we can do that. So we're excited.
It, it sounds like we're working to try to balance the need to move quickly on some aspects of this.
Right.
But also to build some consensus. One of the things that I sensed tonight in the comments was, was more consensus. I mean, not, there certainly was a lot of disagreement, but more consensus than, than what I think there was certainly two weeks ago. And that's encouraging. I, I, I respect the need to move, to move, but I also value that consensus because I think, I think we, yes, we're not going to complete, we're not going to please everybody, but I think, I think that, that people need to be able to hear each other.
Absolutely. And as you would imagine, our staff team is out aggressively talking to everybody. So we've heard comments and statements now, I have, that have been modified. And I think that's due to the great staff work, you know, that we do. And we go out and we, you know, want to get to know those people and what their concerns are. And if they're open, then we have a sharing opportunity and we can build a bridge of communication that leads to trust, and then we get back to collaboration. And so I think, you know, that's kind of where we're headed. You know, other options could be considered if, you know, let's just assume if we determined early on, nobody's concerned about the ITEP trail or the KRT Pavilion. Well, then that could, those things, so, you know, we'll have those discussions. But if it's, we can't move ahead with anything until we, well, then we'll have to take the time to do that. I think our Carl Park Planning for the Playground added, you know, it's probably a year and a half, you know, of planning just for a playground, but it took that time to go through. And that's all of our planning time up to where we, and then essentially starting over with a whole new group. And that led to a, you know, good outcome. So the time investment was well worth it.
It's similar. We were several months into the Carl Park Playground. We had three committees, the Playground, Natural Resources and Forestry and Historic Preservation. And we're, we actually were ready to recommend a playground to the board when new people heard about it for the first time. We heard that on Wednesday. A lot of people were hearing about this for the first time, and they were very concerned. And so we took the time to have lots of conversations. We opened, had a bigger tent, had more people participate in the planning process. It was difficult at times, but we had, we had a better plan that came out of it. There's a lot more investment from some of the new neighbors that came forward, and I'm hopeful for the same outcome here.
I was encouraged to hear you say that if there's not, you know, if there is, if there's not a concern about the ITEP trail, if there's not a concern about the pavilion, we can move forward. Because I'm not hearing anything. Because I'm not hearing anything.
No, we're assuming.
From either the natural, the master naturalist community or the, or the Champagne County Audubon community, so.
I've actually heard some, some of those, you know, I'll call them more of our natural areas type advocates speak about the, the need for better accessibility.
Yes.
To the park.
Yes.
And so this helps to address that.
Right.
You know, as difficult as that Wednesday meeting was, you know, some, some, some good comments came forward that we're, we're looking into. We've, we've enlisted some of the same folks that brought them up to help us research them further. So I'm, I'm, I'm actually sort of grateful for the opportunity. We'll have a better plan for it.
Good. Well, and again, it, I think it's proven fact now, you rarely get to go from plan to construction without some sort of, you know, assuming there's a time period in between. You know, if you're stopping and then next week starts construction, you'll probably avoid that. But generally, our, our history has been acquiring land for the future, managing it in an interim level in a variety of ways, and then making plans and then enacting some part of that and then continuing over time. So it's really an endless cycle of planning and development, but it's, you know, putting our community first and listening to, making sure that what we actually build would be used and, and valued. So that's, that's important. And are there any other comments? Any other staff additions? Again, everybody's been working hard to try to get people to want to share and, and bring folks together, so.
Well, I, I just think it's important that we do all this work that we're doing because the high hope and the underrepresented people are going to be counting on us.
Right.
To make the decisions for them. They're not, they're not as, uh, they don't, may not feel comfortable coming forward. They may not, I don't know what the reasoning would be, but I think we as the park district need to be looking out for everyone. And we heard a lot of good comments from both active and passive. And I think Bob Baden said in the very beginning when he was talking to Tim, that in the end, we'll probably have a plan that people from other states and other communities will want to come look at and model after. And I fully believe that as well. I mean, we've seen some pretty nice, uh, active, passive, but they're also, the ones we saw were more, uh, more property, so the more expansive. I think this will be a unique opportunity. And I think Urbana will be very proud of it when we're done.
We're trying to encourage, you know, use of technology. It was in our early program years ago when we developed our first program, you know, are we using technology, things like dark sky and, you know, making sure lighting concerns are minimized or, you know, contained? You know, there's other people that live in that area too, so we want to be respectful of that. And again, I think I stated, but we don't really have a plan. We're at option one and two. And so we can't go any further. So there is no plan, there's no decision, and there's no board action at this point. So it's still an ongoing process. That's what we're trying to remind people. You know, there is, you know, we heard the plans, well, there's no plan. We have options, we're in the planning process. So, you know, it's just that larger issue of how do you communicate through a larger networks of multiple networks and keep the facts and everything, you know, really tight? And it's hard to do that. And I don't think social media really is our friend with that because it doesn't lend itself to any credibility, in, in my opinion. So I largely avoid it and, you know, try to redirect people to our websites or could you call me? We could have a conversation and talk about it. Any other comments on, or any of the other topics?
Tim, I think what you said's a really good point, just to realize that these two options were never intended to be final.
Right.
It was always an intent to get feedback on them to refine into an improved plan. We're, we're ready to get feedback and we heard that there's some new concerns from the community. And so now we're, we're talking about those concerns, bringing in more people into our discussion before we get additional feedback from the community and I will become a refined plan to bring forward. So it's, uh, it's all about the process and, and we're, we're ready to, to continue to talk and learn more.
Yep. So we predict a good outcome ultimately. And I, you know, timeline is, is, you know, less, you know, important, but knowing that we can draw to a close. You know, remember, we're going to probably have some increased costs with our planning, you know, costs with our design team. Um, so, you know, I'm just trying to suggest we have, keep the wheels on the track. And as long as we're moving, that's great. If we need more time to move and get more information, great. But, you know, we've, we've got to deliver the community a plan and that's our goal. All right. That's all I had.
Thanks, Tim. Um, moving on to President's Report, in terms of upcoming meetings, I, I hope everybody's aware of the Wondell Sculpture Garden Celebration. It's going to be part of Jazz Walk this Friday, so I would encourage people to come out for that. This can be an interesting event. The board study session will be on the third of October and familiar topic will be Prairie Weaver Master Plan Vision Book. And, and some solar planning, I gather. You also have some things.
That's right.
You're going to want to show us. And then on October tenth, we already heard there may be some bids to, to act on. The ever-popular annual audit progress and a review of tax levy options for the coming fiscal year, so.
Watch why.
The wheel keeps turning, we gotta.
Yep.
Tim, would you anticipate that rather than the vision book, it'll be more continuation and discussion in the process?
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I don't think we'll be able to do like visual slides and that sort of thing. So it'll probably just be updates and sharing with UpDEC our process that we talked to the board about. I'll include the board with support of, of that approach so they know that, you know, we were authorized to move board.
And are we actually also planning to vote on the black box on, on October ten?
Well, we're trying to track that process, get that moving and keep it, keep it ahead. We don't want to be behind, but obviously at the appropriate time.
Well, okay. I mean, I think we have done it perhaps as early as, as October, although I thought more typically it was November.
The action step would be, it's literally presenting, you know, some options and
Options for it.
Soliciting any additional, you know, what, what might this look like, et cetera?
It says action on resolution.
Well, I see that she put that in there.
Yeah. One thing Laura and I.
Like the vision book, I'm, I think it's.
I understand that.
It's a possibility, but not li, probably not likely for an action item.
Or the abnormal aspect.
Michael, related to that schedule, something I think Laura and I have talked about, we might want to do at a future study session is kind of go over our annual actions again. We've had enough upheaval between COVID and new auditors and just a variety of things. And so each month, we're kind of checking, is this right? Do we move it up? Do we move it back? And, you know, that might get us on track for a few years until things, you know, maybe juggle us out. And we have some flexibility. Some of it's historic or, and then some have to be done on a certain schedule. So it may be good to revisit that.
You, you, you never want to get tripped up by the ones that are.
Absolutely.
Institutes.
Right.
You've just got to do it by then.
Yep. That's where that schedule really, you know, comes in handy. So we don't miss any of those and we track it all the time. So it's probably due for a revisit and, you know, consensus on what months are appropriate or, you know, what's, what must happen, what has some flex and maybe some in-betweens.
Right. Anyway, I did not have anything additional to report. Moving on to liaison reports, the, the finance study group met on August thirty-first. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm glad to see you're doing better.
Thank you.
We did discuss a, a few things among them, uh, the fact that, that might be necessary to kind of adjust the timing of the, the Weaver planning that's coming through here. And, um, there were also ongoing questions. Now I'm drawing a blank on, I, I had this in my head a moment ago. The, the, the staffing issues that, that we're also then dealt with. And, um, I am drawing.
We would have talked about the slide tower.
Yeah. Prairie play updates. I know we talked a lot about that with the fundraising and the picket sales kicking off and that Jazz Walk will be happening.
But nothing, nothing earth-shattering. Moving on to the policy study group.
We have not had a need to meet.
Yeah. And Parks Foundation?
We met yesterday and we did talk about the Jazz Walk event, rededication. Remember that, that activities start at three-thirty actually, so if you want to come to that, that'd be great.
What is that going to look like? We keep talking about it, it's going to start at three-thirty.
That, that's the, that's the mixer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the mixer. And then four-fifteen is the rededication. And then five-thirty is when the actual Jazz Walk begins. Gee, I pulled that out of my head. And yes, I don't know if you've received a letter or an email with respect to the picket fences. As a fundraiser, instead of having rocks this time, uh, there, that you can put your hand in the concrete, uh, there's going to be a fence around it that has picket fences that will be engraved, isn't the right word, but, but.
Carved.
Carved, yeah. That's, that's, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking. In them, I, I already have reserved one in honor of my granddaughter, so, um, if you get a chance to, to do that. But that's their, that, that's a big fundraiser. And, um, one of the things that I was really excited about initially, the fundraising goal for Prairie Play was, the new Prairie Play was a hundred thousand, and they've already got it, so they raised the goal to a hundred and fifty thousand. So, uh, that's, that's really encouraging. The other encouraging thing is that I found out that Joe DeLuce, who is the former executive director of Champagne Park District, is joining the, um, the Urbana Parks Foundation. So that will be, um, somebody who has an enormous knowledge about parks and how they function financially. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Roger. And any UpDEC Planning Study Group report?
Uh, that we met and we don't have any plans to meet for probably six or so months, something like that.
We came up with some powerful topics, I think.
Yeah.
Really like, took some off the board and then put some, like some newer ones on there. And I think they were, I felt, powerful.
Yeah.
I think that will take advantage of our kind of very engaged current UpDEC group. So it'll be good.
Can you share examples? Are we waiting to launch that in September?
I knew you were going to ask.
I should have brought my list too, but I think, you know, this number of people in the community we work with, we thought would be good to come in. And, you know, we've got new, new partners, I think just new work, you know, new planning options that we want to start engaging that are, you know, active type topics to get people excited and, you know, involved.
Yeah, I guess that's my, my thing as lo, as long as we're engaging them and not just educating them.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I mean, I think like, for instance, just the fact that like, right, the, that this kickoff meeting, we're inviting the new police chief, right? So that I think that is setting the tone for the year.
Right, right.
I think one that I thought was important was talking to them about what happens at conference in January and then how we use that to plan and how we mix that into things that we're doing or advancing. So I thought that was really.
Laura, I think we recommended that we would invite, consider inviting if the board's supportive, our chair of UpDEC, it might be nice to get an UpDEC person. We've extended that to the foundation. And Ellen Kersenoff joined us last year and went to foundation-related educational sessions. We thought maybe we could, if we can, assume we can afford one more person, that might be something and probably a good thing to reward your chair after, you know, all that hard work and, you know, an option to go to the state conference, that they could come back and they could share, you know, with the group, their experiences. So it's just really building that network of experiences. And I sense we've turned that corner of lecturing. You know, every, we've got kind of different people participating now and I think we got to have a, you know, a kind of a different mix of UpDEC people, you know? You know, many years ago, it was often folks that were retired and available and, you know, you had more of that. Now we have a mix of people that are open, available, working, not working, working from, you know, everything. So it gives a more diverse mix is maybe what I'm trying to say.
I mean, I think just in general, the general vibe of, like I mean, right, because I started on UpDEC and the vibe when I was on it was just very much like, this is an educational group of like learning how the park district operates. And like, the current UpDEC group, I feel like it, it's a brainstorming slash like, it's like a study group in the sense that like, they come prepared to ask questions and find solutions, right? So I think that's a big key and I kind of really hope that UpDEC kind of continues in this. And obviously like, it's always been this like kind of sounding board for information for the park district, but I think that before it was the park district would bring the questions to UpDEC and now UpDEC brings the questions to the park district.
Right. So we've changed the agenda to include those, you know, so that they're prepared. And we do a lot of follow-up now compared to many, many years ago where we're done with that meeting, you move on. Now we're, hey, I got to follow up. There were questions and, you know, issues that need resolutions, so it's good work.
It's okay. No, it's okay.
And I know in the seventies and eighties, uh, when I was doing my research on, on my book, UpDEC generated a lot of the ideas.
Right.
That, that, that ended up coming before the board.
Right.
So that's not new.
Right.
Though it's a good thing.
Well, I'm, I'm delighted to see that coming back.
Yes.
And I mean, I think that just comes with the energy of the, the people that are there, you know, so.
Right. And highlights one of the big challenges is making sure that we get good people.
Right.
And motivated people on, on the committee. Any other comments? Um, moving on to old business and the only item is anything that we moved from the consent agenda, which was nothing. So we're on to new business, item A, increase construction contingency for the Health and Wellness Center.
Well, probably no one's surprised to see this on our agenda. I think staff obviously is at a point where we really want to talk about that and give you some more background on why we need that. Obviously, we're, you know, conscious of our spending and, you know, aware of that, but we thought we'd go over a few items tonight and justify this, you know, number and make sure we are all on the same page with that. I think staff has some information they want to share.
Back when we approved our contract with, with Core, it was a guaranteed maximum price. Uh, and that includes everything that was basically designed at that time for the bid package that went out and we approved for construction. There is contingency that's included within their GMP and that's a, like basically a contractor contingency and an architect's design contingency. But anything that comes outside of the scope that was in that initial development of the GMP price would be a change order that's on the owner to now provide additional funds. And so when the GMP was approved, we at that time really just did a modest contingency. It was two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, which is, you know, basically a one-point-five percent construction contingency. And at that time, what we're thinking is, you know, based on available cash on hand, like liquid liquidity, uh, we would start with a modest contingency. And then in the future, as we start to get more funding, um, an example of that is the appropriated increase in FY twenty-four from the general fund of two-point-two million that as construction moves forward, we'd be able to evaluate any future need for contingency and then come back to the board and increase it at that time. And so in the, the memo, I have, we have one change order that's executed at this point. And that is the change order one. And that was for an adjustment to a subcontractor to make sure that we had our BEP participa, participation percentage meet the requirements from DCEO. And that was a small increase. And then we had a fire alarm system change, uh, which was really to sink in our fire alarm throughout the district. And that was, um, cost us a little more than what was originally specified. So those additional costs would come out of our owner contingency. And we have two other change orders that are currently in review. These are near final, we're ready to, to execute here soon. So change order two is to go basically from a public to. So change order two is to go basically from a public to a private fire hydrant. And then there's also the installation of a canopy. So if you remember, when we awarded the original contract, we rejected that alternate. It's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We wanted to go back, review that, provide basically the same sort of feature at a much lesser price. And so that canopy is now getting added back to the facility. And then we had some occupation sensors that needed to get added that were not part of the original design as well. And then a change order three is low voltage wiring. So this is basically all the wiring associated with the facility that's not currently under electrician's scope of work. And primarily, this is going to be for a lot of the IT service items that we're going to be going into contract with as an owner soft cost item, hopefully in the next couple months. So they need to have a certified contractor do their, their wiring for them as well.
What is an occupation sensor?
It's for, like, to sense people in the room.
Oh, it's like a, okay.
Lights.
For lights.
Other devices.
The, the fire hydrant item was an item that came out of the city of Urbana's plan review. And so the previous design had a source of water on the exterior of the building. You've probably seen them, you know, sometimes it's sort of a Y. The city reviewed the plans. They said that the nearest public hydrant wasn't close enough to the facility and that that alone was not sufficient for, from a code perspective. And so we, we, we need to add a private hydrant. So that's why that's on there. And as Andy mentioned, you know, the low voltage, that there, there's a lot of low voltage wiring in this, this facility, much more so than we had at either this facility or the outdoor pool. And it made sense to have the electrical contractor that's already on, onsite doing the work for us. We did get an alternate proposal to evaluate, to make sure it's a good price and it, it's, we feel, feel like it's a, it's a good a price.
So alternatively, like what we've done with other facilities in the past is we're paying for that still, that low voltage wiring to happen. With this one, we're going to include it under Core's contract. So doing that means we need to pull from our contingency to pay Core, to pay the electrician group to do the low voltage, rather than us going out bidding low voltage wiring and then having another contractor come onsite and do that work for us. But either way, we're still going to be paying it. It's just which contingency basically are we taking it out of? And so totaling all those up, you know, and I pull that from the contingency that the board had approved in March, that leaves us with about sixty-two thousand dollars for the rest of construction.
I don't quite understand the math in all of this. You add up a hundred and seventy-five thousand, subtract it from two hundred and seven, and that's a lot less than sixty-two thousand.
Yeah. If I wonder if it's twenty-six, no. I switched it. Twenty-four, thirty-two would work.
Which actually makes it more dire that we proved the digital-
It's thirty-two thousand would be left. Yeah, sorry, thirty-two thousand, a little more that would be left.
Thank you, Michael.
So what we're, you know, looking to do is add another two hundred thousand dollars to provide that cushion for any future change orders that we're already anticipating some. And, and some of those things would be changes to the lighting in the fitness rooms, changes to the lighting for the sculpture piece in the entryway. When we have the contract for the gym equipment and scoreboards, the park district is going to be purchasing that equipment, but we're going to have the Core contract cover that installation for us. So that cost of that installation will now go over to them. So that'll be another future change order as well. And so we'll could just continue to evaluate the contingency, the owner contingency for construction as we move through the process each month. As we have contracts that come to the board, that's a good time for us to evaluate where we're standing and be able to discuss with you all if we want to do any more increases.
I just want to make sure I understand this, that this was effectively always the plan?
Yeah. We started with a very modest contingency. I mean, that's a 1.5% construction contingency is, is pretty modest.
And I think in, in addition, that some of these expenses were already anticipated. We're just changing the method and how we're paying for them so that we get the same electrician. I'm not sure I understand the value in the, you can elaborate if you want, in the fitness equipment? It's just they're taking care of it or the installation?
Oh, the gym equipment?
Yeah, the gym equipment.
We're purchasing the equipment, but the installation, they already have the installation for like the, I think it's the curtains, but they don't have the installation for the scoreboard. That guy that does that installs all of that stuff for Porter.
So we now, we just need to add him to-
We could purchase the equipment and say, your person that's under contract, your group that's under contract for Porter installation equipment, we would like you just to go ahead and take care of all of that after we purchase the stuff.
Hangs the baskets, make sure that the, the electronics for the baskets-
So this streamlines processes.
And we're still saving on doing that legwork, figuring it all out. Kind of getting it pulled together for that part. Instead of just saying, we need this, figure it out and give it to us at whatever cost.
Right.
Not to put too fine a point on it though, I mean, we're approving-
Some things.
A contingency of what's being proposed here. We don't have enough cash to cover all of this without a borrowing plan later.
Correct.
So I just, I mean, I just want to make sure the board is fully aware of that.
Right.
We're talking about some numbers. It's, it's not like you can see a budget against which, well, this is exactly where all the money is going. So we are going to have to find a way to cover that cash-
Right.
Later on in the process.
I think one of the documents, I think that we've shared before is sort of the, sort of the running budget. It was, is sort of proposed or, you know, not actual, but to the best of the ability of the team to put together spending plans in months to try to figure out, you know, at what point do we need to push that button when we will need an infusion of, you know, funds that, Michael's correct, that don't exist. The concept is keep working the project, get it down. Hopefully you're paying, maybe there's other inputs or ways to, you know, massage it. But at some point ahead of time, make sure that we have everything in place to, you know, so that's where we're working with Laura and on the finance. And I think our finance study group will essentially take that function on every month too, to do the oversight. Where are we in the project? How much money do we have? When will we need more? Keep tracking it because we'd hate to run out of our working money and, and scramble to find resource. And so our understanding is working with Spear, you know, we can make that transition from in-house cash to outhouse cash that, you know, we'll be paying interest on. I call it that because out of house-
The ARPA funds have all been spent.
Yes. And we've been advised by-
County and city.
City and county to make sure.
City we just began to use.
Yeah, but our goal is to spend them up.
Where do we buy the steel with?
The county.
Beg your pardon? County, the county, okay. The steel was the county money.
Again, their leadership is encouraging us to spend those federal dollars as fast as possible and get them committed and spent, you know, to the best of our ability.
We still only spent, you know, a hundred, or a hundred thousand, I think of the donations. I mean, still 1.7 million in donations of us paying it, so.
I just want to make sure I understand what Michael was saying though. At this point, we have not identified a source for-
The stop can.
For this, for this two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, the one point two.
We have appropriated and local funds and grant funds that meets our GMP and exceeds it to cover soft costs. So we may need more money for some of our FFNE and soft costs. That would be where we need to look at short-term lending or where we, if we run into any issues with grant reimbursement timing and liquidity of our funds.
Cash flow.
But as far as what we actually have to cover the costs, including this increase in contingency, we've got that in grants, donations and the appropriated funding, especially the one that is a 2.2 million from the general fund.
Right. Essentially, basic construction costs, but the total project cost, including all, everything, you know?
Some of the owner's soft costs outside of the construction contract in this contingency are yet not funded. And that's what we'll need to look and determine how we'll fund that through some, some, some short, short gap.
And if we potentially need to cover any grant kind of timing and stuff.
Now, Roger, if you recall, we had that spreadsheet that showed-
Yeah, and I knew that, I knew there was short-term, but this does not increase overall what we're going to be needing to source.
It, it, it certainly does in that we are increasing our anticipated spending for, to cover some additional contingency items, some of which were in the owner's soft cost budget that we moved over here. So it's, it's less than the full 200. We don't necessarily know that we're going to spend this full 200, but we're just making it available to us, yeah.
And then there's new items that were unknown and kind of presented, like that hydrant, you know, which, okay, we have to have that. So, you know, that wasn't planned and budgeted. Right. Correct.
What we started out with was an unrealistic contingency.
Well, it's been a dream project.
And I understand why it was done that way.
Right.
But we've, 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 in recent times, you remember, we've been talking 15% contingency.
Right, or above. Eighteen, some projects might have an 18%, right? And, but yeah, for the public at home watching and listening, we want to assure we have basic costs for the, you know, bottom line hardscape, let's say, but there's other costs in the project that we'll have to be responsible for at some point. And our goal is to minimize that level of any other spending or borrowing.
Well, I move to approve an additional $200,000 in construction contingency for the indoor Health and Wellness Center to Core Construction Services of Illinois, of Peoria, Illinois.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Cedric.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously, all commissioners voting. There was no new business removed from the consent agenda, so we're down to Roman numeral nine, comments from commissioners. Sounds like we're commented out, so we have completed our agenda and I will declare adjournments.
Thanks, all.